Good evening, everyone. Sorry for the little delay, but we are ready to start our meeting. It's my pleasure to call this meeting of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen for the City of Natchez to order. I'll ask you to please stand and join me in a word of prayer that is followed by our pledge. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the day you've given us, a beautiful day. Each day is a gift. Father, we thank you for every person here. We ask your blessings upon them. We ask your continued blessings upon our city, upon our country, Lord. Let us be a people that reflect your love, love for God and love for one another, and let your love be with us this evening as we deliberate upon the issues that are facing our city tonight. Father, just thanking you for freedom, thanking you for the opportunity that we have to come together in this place, and thanking you, Father, for each day that truly is a gift. In your precious name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Let us repeat together our pledge.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. We'll ask the clerk to administer the roll call.
Alderwoman Hall.
Here.
Alderman Fraser.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith, here.
Alderwoman Irving.
Here.
Alderman Davis.
Here.
Alderman Maroni.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, all are present and accounted for.
Thank you so much. We will now have approval of minutes. Madam Clerk?
We have four sets of minutes for approval, first being the special call meeting held on September 4th, 2025.
So moved. Second. Motion made by Alderwoman Irving, seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion. We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Next set of minutes was the special call meeting held on September 8th, 2025.
Was the pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Davis, second.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Maroni. Discussion. We'll call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Next set of minutes is the regular board meeting held on September 9th, 2025.
Was the pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderwoman Hall, seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion. We'll call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next item.
Okay. Final set of minutes for approval is the special called meeting held on September 15th, 2025.
Was the pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Davis, seconded by Alderwoman Hall. Discussion. We'll call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We now will enter into a public hearing. The public hearing is regarding an application for a, I believe, Bluffside Properties Allen Laird, a rezoning. And we will have this public hearing, then we're going to have another public hearing. We've actually got two tonight. You realize that? So we'll break this down. I need one motion now for the public hearing for Bluffside Properties. Motion made by Alderwoman Hall, seconded by Alderwoman Smith. Discussion. We'll call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. So I'm now going to recognize our city planner, Mingo Tingle.
Thank you.
To present the case that is to be considered during this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Board of Aldermen. This is a request for a map amendment to rezone the lot from an R3 mixed density residential to a B2 general business in a historic district. This is for 513 South Canal Street, formerly known as 208 Madison Street. And you have in your packet the staff report and supporting documentation, and the following is a summary of that report. The subject property at 513 South Canal Street, formerly 208 Madison Street, is a less than half an acre corner lot with frontage on three streets, Canal, Maple, and Madison. It is currently developed with a masonry and metal commercial building and warehouse. In December of 2021, the applicant sought to subdivide the property to separate two existing buildings due to setback requirements under the current R3 HD zoning. City staff, along with the Planning Commission, recommended rezoning to a B2 HD to resolve zoning conflicts and facilitate subdivision. The property's existing commercial use and the need for a business license further supported the rezoning. Despite a recommendation for denial from the, from then interim city planner based on the 2018 downtown master plan, the Planning Commission unanimously approved the rezoning in March of 2022. Staff reviewed the case under Section 9.1.4 of the Natchez Development Code and found that the area includes a mix of residential and commercial uses. The rezoning would align zoning with actual land use. The change would not negatively impact surrounding properties, and the rezoning would support the applicant's ability to operate legally and efficiently. The Planning Commission therefore recommends to the Mayor and the Board of Aldermen the approval of rezoning of 513 South Canal Street from an R3 HD to a B2 HD.
Okay. Thank you so much. At this time, we will not entertain a motion. That will be done after the public hearing. We will now have a public hearing on this rezoning issue before us. Do we have anyone who would like to speak on behalf of this item? I see the owner here, Mr. Allen Laird. Would you like to address the board?
Sure.
If you would like to. I know you've been very patient through this process. Please state your name and address for the record and also sign. There should be a sign in sheet. Yes, the city clerk needs that for her record.
Okay. My name is Allen Laird. My address is 205 Dunbarton Drive here in Natchez, Mississippi. And my wife and I purchased this building a few years ago in the hopes of renovating it. It's kind of an eyesore. It's been an eyesore for quite a long time. The windows are still boarded up. And some of you may know that I work as a grant writer for Southwest Mississippi Planning and Development District. I'm actually working with James Johnson on a DRA grant right now under the hill of Silver Street, redoing the bricks down there. But anyway, I also moonlight as a photographer. And so my goal was to purchase this building and open a little photo studio in the building. Half of the building is, it is a commercial building. Half of the building is heated and cooled. The other half isn't. So it could be used as storage or whatever. But that's, that was my plan for the building. And that's why I'm here.
Okay. Thank you so much. Alderman Maroni?
I've, I've looked at this building before I've been in it. I've driven around that lot numerous times. As a matter of fact, I went by it again on the way over here just to make sure, you know, what we were talking about. And I just cannot see any reason not to do this. We need to just, this has been going on far too long. This should have been rezoned a long time ago so this man can make use of this building, clean it up, and improve the conditions down there. I think it would be a great improvement. I just, I don't understand why it hadn't been done before now.
It didn't make it to the board. Thank you. Alderwoman Hall, that's your recognition?
The reason wasn't done, but we never got it. The board never received this before. So this is the first time.
We're very grateful to Mr. Tingle for bringing this to us tonight. Thank you very much, Mr. Tingle, for all your work. I can't see you. I know you're back there. There you are. Yes, Alderwoman Irving?
I just want to just go back and just reiterate. It went through two or three different hands of city planners. Went from Mr. Gianni, and then we went to, when we had our interim, Mr. Field Walker. You know, he was there. And so that's the reason why it didn't just make it to the board. So now we have.
I've been patient, so I'm good. I hope I can make y'all proud with it, getting the windows redone and hopefully paint it and spruce it up, make it look good.
We, we, Mr. Laird, I don't know if there are any other questions for Mr. Laird. We might need to see if there are other members of the public here to speak. Alderwoman Irving?
Okay. So bringing it back to us, and this is just a question I'm asking. It doesn't have to go back to the Planning Commission since it has been three years?
That's, that's correct, and that's a good question. That was a concern that we had.
Yes.
Because there is nothing in the development code that would have foreseen this kind of delay, there was never a time limit given for any decision by or recommendation by the Planning Commission to come to the Board of Aldermen. So therefore, there wasn't any deadline for this to be enacted before it had to be re, or go through that process again for the Planning Commission. And so therefore, the Planning Commission had unanimously approved it in '22, and so therefore, we felt comfortable that we could bring it to the Board of Aldermen for approval.
Had it, but had it been mentioned to them that you're doing this process, the members are aware of, the commissioners are?
I did. I spoke to them and let them know.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other members of the public that would like to address the board during the public hearing? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Alderwoman Hall, seconded by Alderman Maroni. Discussion. We'll call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. We're back in regular session. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Alderwoman Hall?
I'd like to move the application PC 22-02, Bluffside Properties, Allen Laird, 513 South Canal Street, formerly 208 Madison Street, map 41-111B-25. Be amended to rezone the lot from R3 mixed density residential to B2 general business in a historic district.
Second.
Thank you, Alderwoman Hall. And the second has been made by Alderwoman Smith. Discussion on the motion. Yes, Alderwoman Irving?
And it is, it's not directly germane, but I was just looking, the back of the building has a storage. And you did say you would use it for storage, the back of the building?
Maybe. I really don't know. It's empty right now.
Okay, okay. But as far as the appearance and all of that, because it hasn't been used, you're going to get everything up to par with the outer appearance of the building as well?
I'll give you time. But yes, that is.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I know the planning department will assist you, Mr. Laird, because there are various steps to follow, including approvals and various applications. We're excited, we're excited that you're doing this. Mr. Attorney?
Is it 513 South Canal or 513 North Canal?
That is a typo. We'll fix that.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear.
That'll be, that'll be James also in motion.
I made the motion to say North Canal.
Okay. Thank you for catching that, Mr. Attorney. At that, at this time, I will call for the question. We'll now proceed to a vote. All, I believe we need a roll call vote. Maybe, did we? We don't? Just a boys' vote? All right. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And again, thank you for your patience. And, and we've got a city planner who's really getting after it. Thank you, Mr. Tingle. We now will have another public hearing, and this is on the matter of adjudicated properties. I'd like to now ask for a motion to go into public hearing to discuss this. Alderwoman Irving has made the motion, seconded by Alderwoman Hall. Discussion. We'll call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. At this time, I will now recognize Commander Lee Best, who is with our Code Enforcement Department to conduct the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Check our quicker here. The 2020 Municipal Code Title 21, Municipalities, Chapter 19 refers to the health, safety, and welfare. Chapter 21, 1911, is the determination that property or parcel of land is menace. Authorized municipal employee may make the determination that a property or parcel of land is menace under certain circumstances. Notification to property owner in hearing, cleaning private property, cost, and penalty as assessment against property and the appeal. May have to do it for me, Lee. Go to the next one. Here's an overview of the procedure of code enforcement. We would like to be a proactive unit and go out and seek out code violations, but to this point, the only violations that we have enforced are violations that have come in from complaints, either from the city alderman or from the portal or from phone calls complaining on properties. So none of these properties are of our creation. Once we receive a complaint, we conduct a right-of-way inspection, verify the property owner, and attempt to make contact. We use the Adams County Tax Assessor's Office, TSC Maps, Onex Tax Roll, and other investigative software to locate owners of these properties. We mail a violation notice, and this is the, the warning letter. Once the warning letter expires, we re-inspect, conduct an administrative search warrant, and mail out and post a public hearing notice two weeks before the public hearing. We also conduct a final inspection within 48 hours of the hearing. The first property that is for adjudication tonight is 15 Bishop Street. And you'll see here the steps with the dates that we've taken, and each, each of these properties was re-inspected yesterday with, with no change. 15 Bishop Street is, was reported for an offensive accumulation of rubbish and limbs. And the property owner has started to clean. You can see the, in the picture on your right, the accumulation of the overgrowth down the driveway and down the side of the house. But the, whoever they had come clean the property piled the limbs and trash up in front of the yard on the street, but there's no utility service there, so the waste management is not going to pick it up.
We don't have waste management.
I'm sorry. The trash people are not going to pick it up.
Meridian waste.
The next one is 13, excuse me, 113 Brightwood. This is property of Amina Wilson, and this, let's see here, is an offensive accumulation in the, in the backyard. 13 Lincoln Street, also offensive accumulations. Where's that property? 609 Maple Street, also, this is listed as 609 and 605 Maple Street. 30 North Commerce Street Extension. 2815 Rose Lawn. 907 State Street. 907 State Street was reported, and there's some paperwork over there where it's been reported in the past, for offensive accumulations and a, a lapidated structure. And Officer Vasquez conducted an administrative search warrant as recently as today, and here's a copy of his warrant and some photographs from inside the residence. More photographs. There's no utility service or plumbing here. Next one is 11 West Wood Lawn. There's an offensive accumulation in abandoned vehicle.
Where is that again? 13 West Wood Lawn?
11.
11? Okay.
And this is 13 West Wood Lawn for offensive accumulation.
Did you say Oak Street was one? No. Was it Oak Street?
No, ma'am. That's all of the properties that we have. We started at the beginning of the month with 30 public hearing notices, and since we mailed public hearing notices, we were able to clear all but, but these nine. So I would like to.
Before we go on to the progress from properties, I'd like for us to take care of these nine properties that you presented, Commander Best. At this time, we are in a public hearing, and we will ask if there are any members of the public here who wish to speak pertaining to any of these properties that have been presented tonight. Yes, ma'am? Welcome. Thank you for being here. If you would please sign in and also state your name and address for our city clerk.
Okay. My name is Mrs. Adair White Jackson. My address. My address is 941 Eagles Nest Drive in Byram, Mississippi. 391, I'm sorry, 39272. These, there are two properties on the list here that are family homes of my family. And those addresses are 11 West Woodlawn and 15 Bishop Street.
We could pull those off.
Ms. Jackson, will you also please sign in and your address?
Okay. Okay. Okay, this is 15 Bishop Street. And what I can say is that since we received the notice, the property is in the process of being cleared. It is a process. And the debris that's out front and will be taken away, okay, by the person that is clearing the property for us. I know the city is not going to pick it up. So the family members, we will be responsible for having that cleared. And the lot will continue to be cleared. It is not finished yet, but we just need some more time to get it done. Let's see, the other property. Okay, 11 West Woodlawn. There's something I wanted to say about that. If you could show the ownership on that? Okay, it, it shows Sharon, owned by Sharon Herbert and G. Marsall. I have to say that I am a direct descendant of the Thompson family, George Thompson, who, to my knowledge, now, he was my grandfather. I mean, that's not just my knowledge, but he was my grandfather. But I'm not aware of who those owners are that's listed on that property. It is still listed as heirs property. But again, I am in the process of having that property cleared up. So we would request more time to get that done. I'm not sure what else you need to, I need to address at this time. Other than that, we request an extension to get the properties cleared up.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Are there any questions of Ms. Jackson?
I would want to say this, so that you will understand if you will not explain, Ms. Thompson, is that, is that meridian waste will not pick up only because the properties do not have utilities on, such as water. Water has to be on, you know, at that property. I don't know if you were told that information or not, but that's the reason why. Otherwise, they're there to serve our community. At this point, I'll let my other councilman speak, because I...
Further questions?
Go back to the notice slide, please.
Is that the slide?
13, 11, West Woodlawn. But, okay, this?
That's 15 Bishop.
That's 15 Bishop, that's, yes, we discussed that one too.
Okay.
There it is.
Okay. Both of these were sent out in August. And so there's been 30, over 30 days that you've had an opportunity to clean both of these properties. And that's why you had, you had 30 days already.
Okay.
You asked for an extension, and I'm just stating that you, you've received, the warning letter went out on August the 21st, 2025.
Do you have any response, Ms. Jackson?
Okay, my, my response on that is that, first of all, the letter, the, both properties are still listed as heirs property.
But, but it's your property?
It's not. It's my family's property.
Correct.
Right. I did not receive the notice. I was made, the notice was sent to one of my deceased uncles in Slidell, Louisiana. I did receive the notice about two weeks ago. Okay, not received the notice, but I, I heard from a relative that the notice had been sent. So that's when we started working on it.
Okay. Yes, Alderwoman, and then I'm...
But this is not the first time this property has been cited. Because this is in my ward, so I know this is not the first time that this property has been cited.
Okay, so where do we go from here? What is it, what happens from this point?
Alderwoman Smith, you're asking to be recognized.
I, I think that, would like to turn that back on you. What, what would be your plan to clean it up? Our preference is for owners to take care of the properties and the city not to have to. So what, can, tell us what your plan is and how long it will take you to do it? Because it would have to be pretty quick before, if you could.
Well, I, I would say 30 days, within 30 days.
And that's just for cleaning up and then removing the vehicle?
Removing the vehicle and cleaning up the, the property, yes.
That'll be up to the board.
It'll be up to the board when we get back into our regular session. Alderwoman Irving?
I, I would say I will grant you the 30 days to do that, because I realize you're not even local.
Right.
It's hard for us who live here to get someone to do something. So you're talking about someone who has to come back in, familiarize herself with the area, and ask questions. Where can I find someone who's going to help or assist me to clean this property?
Right.
Okay, and I do understand, and I get that. And so it would be my suggestion that we do offer the 30-day extension. And as you are making progress, we have Mr. Best. Make that connection with him. And allow him to come and see the progress that you're making.
Okay.
And he, you know, will assist you in any way possible, if he know of anyone that does that kind of work. But you've already connected with those people.
Right.
And so it's that open line of communication that we ask that you keep.
Okay.
And, and make us aware.
One other thing I'd like to say about these two pieces of property is that squatters had moved into the property. And I have been dealing with since April. I have been trying to get them to evacuate, to, to vacate the property. I did get the police involved. We did get them out. I had the house boarded up, okay, and posted. And the squatters came back in. Wow. So we're still dealing with that, which simply lets me know that we need a better plan.
Yes.
Okay, which, as soon as we get legal stuff cleared out, because with heirs property, you're dealing with...
That's indefinite, it seems, in most cases, if you don't get property done.
Alderman Fraser, you're asking to be recognized?
Ma'am, I'm glad you had the, the, forward with the come, the comment before this board. And as you say, it's heir property. What is, what is really, what is really confusing me? The owners, they say Sharon Herbert and G. Marsall. You say that you don't know these people?
I have no idea. All I can assume is that that's an error.
Mr. Best?
Yes, sir.
Is Mr. Best here?
Yes.
When you did the research on this property, this is what you got, right? This came from the tax office?
Yes, sir, from the tax office. We'll check with, with Ms. Kim tomorrow and try to get that corrected.
So, so ma'am, see, they're sitting, we're sitting up here, they're saying, you need to do this, you need to do it. First, you need, we need, you need to get that straight, who really own that property? Because somebody, evidently, somebody must have bought it through taxes or something. Although you say it's heir property, but it's listed. It's listed over the tax office as Sharon Herbert, and I think that's Greg Marsall, whoever, Marsall. So this is the way this property, I don't know if the family's still legally on it.
We have, we have been paying the taxes on that property. We have receipts.
Okay, okay, you have receipts. But like I say, it hasn't been changed over at the tax office. Because as I say, this gentleman here, the code enforcement supervisor, this is what he got from the tax office, Sharon Herbert and Mr. Marsall. So that's, so my suggestion, just my suggestion is that you need to go over to the tax office and, and get this straight and put back on the books legally. If not, you'll be running back for it before this board so many times, it's pivotal. And you'll be wasting your time unless you don't have it straight over at the tax office.
All right. Ms. Jackson, thank you for being here. I do want to say that your properties are in an area possibly qualifying for historic tax credits. And if you should embark upon a renovation project, as long as you follow the proper guidelines in keeping with the historic nature of the property, very possibly you could be eligible for some historic tax credits that would come back to you or to your family. I would suggest you reach out to Mr. Carter Burns, who is the director of the Historic Natchez Foundation, for any information he might can share with you about those tax credits.
All right.
Carter Burns, Historic Natchez Foundation. And Commander Best can help you make that connection. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time and coming to see us this evening.
So have we made the motion?
We, we're still in the public hearing. Well, we can do that when we go back. Right now, I want to see if we have any other property owners or members of the public who would like to address the board concerning a particular property that is on tonight's adjudication list. Do we have any other property owners? Certainly, yes. If you will come forward to the podium. And, and we will need you to sign in and also state your name and address. And then, and then provide the address you're here to speak about.
Okay. I'm Connie Howington. And my address is 22 Jack Kelly Road in Natchez. And I'm here for, for Dr. Alton Hall on two different properties that he has on Marin Avenue.
But that's not on this list, the nine properties.
Those were on the list, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Oh, they were cleared? Well...
Well...
They're not on this list.
All right, Ms. Howington.
And he didn't tell me, he told me to look at everything straight.
Well, thank you. Thank you for being here.
He's getting old, okay? Real old.
Well, I know Commander Best is working right up to the last minute, trying to get people cleared.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that, y'all.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else here that would like to address the board as part of this public hearing? And, yes, if you would, please come to the podium. Is this about, this has to be pertaining to properties on the adjudication list? All right, Ms. Thornton, if you'll come over to the podium. And if you will, please sign in and state your name and address. And the address of the property that you're here to speak about.
Hello, my name is Teresa Thornton. My address is 1308 West Wood Road. The property I'm asking Mr. Best about has not come up on this. And he said that there were some properties that had been taken off the list.
So if it's taken off the list, within that...
My stepfather and I are here because he got a notice on the property. And he went and spoke to Mr. Lazarus several days ago.
Yes.
And Mr. Lazarus requested that he be at this meeting.
Okay.
So...
Commander Best, is this property not on the list for tonight? Is it something that you're working with at the current time?
It should be moved to the work in progress folder. So we're working.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay, that was, that was our question, because... And, and I had called and asked specifically, I speak, I believe I talked to Jose, I know I talked to you, about the specifics of what you were asking him to do.
This man, he's...
Okay.
Because this man...
The aldermen are telling me that we have to move on. The item's not on our list for tonight. But if you will communicate with Commander Best in any way we can help you.
Okay, so he's cleared as far as what he needs to do on his property? Okay, because he cut down probably 13 trees.
Wow. Ma'am.
Okay.
And so...
We, we will, we...
We're, we're doing our best.
But we also are very patient with our citizens. I'm, I'm sorry, but I, I, I'm the one who keeps order. And I believe Ms. Thornton is a taxpayer, and I'm happy to have her here. I believe we're working this out, and we'll look forward to talking to you later if you should need any further help.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Thornton.
Alderman.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else here that would like to address the board this evening regarding our adjudication list? With that said, it looks like we are ready to conclude our meeting on the public hearing, that is. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Don't move.
Motion made by Alderwoman Hall, seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion. We'll call for the question.
Aye.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you. Commander Best, we can now entertain a motion to adjudicate the properties that you have presented at the pleasure of the board. So, yes, I do have a question, Alderwoman Smith?
I was just going to say, with the exception of given, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Thompson.
Ms. Thompson.
Ms. Jackson.
Jackson.
Oh, Jackson.
Okay.
For the Thompson.
Alderwoman Hall, you're recognized.
I would like to make a motion that eight of the nine properties be adjudicated, with the exception of 11 West Woodlawn, to give Ms. Jackson time to clear the title.
And 15 Bishop. 15 Bishop.
And 15 Bishop.
11.
11.
That's my motion.
And I want to amend that motion, Mr. Mayor.
There is a motion, I can't entertain a motion until it is seconded. Okay, you have seconded the motion?
And, yes.
And now I'm...
I'm asking to amend the motion as well and include both properties, because she has expressed that she need more time with both properties.
Okay. Is that agreeable to you, Alderwoman Hall? It is not agreeable. So the motion as it stands, does...
I will make it a separate motion.
Then, okay. Well, we have to dispense with the motion. Do you wish to continue with your second?
No, I do not.
You withdraw your second?
I withdraw my second.
We need a second on Alderwoman Hall's motion. Alderman Fraser has seconded the motion. And the motion is to proceed with the adjudication on all the properties, with the exception of...
11.
11.
West Woodlawn.
West Woodlawn.
To give Ms. Jackson time to clear the title.
Okay. Do we have discussion on that motion?
I've already shared mine.
We will call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
The nays have it, the motion fails. We will entertain and... The motion was to adjudicate all the properties, with the exception of 11 West Woodlawn, allowing more time for 11 West Woodlawn. Yes.
Okay, and...
I'd like to make a motion that we adjudicate all properties except for 11 West Woodlawn and the Bishop Street.
15 Bishop Street.
And I second that motion.
Okay, a motion that's now been made by Alderman Maroney to adjudicate all the properties, with the exception of two. And it has already been seconded by Alderwoman Irving.
That's correct.
And those two properties are 15 Bishop Street and 11 West Woodlawn. Understanding, Ms. Jackson, I know you're expecting within 30 days you can have them cleared. All right, that is the motion now before us. Any discussion on that motion? We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
There is one nay, but the ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you. Commander Best, for the record, we have to now spread on the minutes the actual wording of the motion that has been voted on to be sure that it is in our minutes in accordance with the Mississippi law.
A resolution adjudicating nuisance properties in the city of Natchez, Mississippi. Whereas the Charter of Natchez, uh, excuse me, whereas the Charter of the City of Natchez, Mississippi provides powers to the mayor and Board of Aldermen generally to ensure property is clean and maintained and to ensure the health, safety, and welfare. And whereas the mayor and Board of Aldermen, as authorized by state law and by section 42-81B of the Natchez City Code, following the provision of the notice required by section 21-19-11 of Mississippi Code of 1972 as amended, held a public hearing on September 23rd, 2025 at 6:00 PM at 115 South Pearl Street, Natchez, Mississippi, in the Council Chamber Building to determine if the property herein described is in such a state of uncleanliness as to be amended to public health, safety, and welfare of the community. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and Board of Aldermen and regular council convened that pursuant to the aforementioned section 21-19-11, Mississippi Code of 1972 as amended, the commission, uh, excuse me, the condition of the following properties was considered at a duly noticed public hearing. The mayor and Board of Aldermen determined that one of the following condition exists on the properties: grass and weeds over 12 inches in height, failure to maintain exterior of building, vehicles parked beyond 72 hours, dangerous or dilapidated structures, offensive accumulations, screaming or screening unsightly items. Pursuant to the report of the investigating code enforcement officer, the conditions on the property are in violation of section 301 dot 3 and section 304 dot 4 of the 2009 International Property Maintenance Code adopted by reference in section 5.9.2 of the Development Code of the City of Natchez, Mississippi. Therefore, that public interest and necessity requiring same, this resolution shall become effective upon passage. The above foregoing resolution, after having been first reduced to writing and was introduced by the Aldermen and was adopted by the rest, the mayor declared the motion carried and relation, resolution adopted the 23rd day of September, 2025.
All right, thank you so much. Let that resolution be spread on the minutes along with the results of the vote that we had tonight. Commander Best, another good job. Thank you for all that you're doing. We now will continue with our meeting. We have next on the agenda Nathan Stubbs with.
Did he have? Was he, was there something else?
Oh, I'm sorry, we were gonna have progress on the properties, I'm moving ahead.
Very briefly.
I'm very sorry, Commander Best, please continue.
We have come to an agreement with Mississippi Department of Corrections to allow state inmate labor to enter private property and to enter and to work on weekends. So Officer Vasquez has worked the last couple of Saturdays. We've obtained some some equipment and he has started cleaning up some of these adjudicated properties. And I'd just like to share a couple of progress photos. This is 16 Williams Street.
And that's the, could I, is that the backyard too?
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome, awesome, awesome.
Right.
Yes.
I think they spent about eight hours on this.
Thank you, thank you.
67 Brenham Avenue.
Yes.
Before and after.
Yes, oh yeah.
And also 62 Brenham Avenue.
Look at the trailer, you guys, we can see.
Another several hour project here.
Look, wow, that's unbelievable, but thank you, thank you.
It's taken quite a few man-hours to complete these, so, but he is working through them as as quickly as they can. And that's all I have for you.
That is tremendous. I'm glad I didn't skip over that.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, I'm I'm trying to go in order, Alderman Hall.
Yes, of all this for property owners, as Alderman Smith said, to clean up their own property. But when property is dilapidated and then disrepair year after year after year, then I am not willing to work with anyone. I work with people all the time, as is Commander Best and Officer Velasquez. We're doing a, they're doing a great job in code enforcement, but there comes a point when people have to take responsibility for their own properties.
Yes, thank you very much. Alderman Irving?
I I just want to commend Mr. Best and Commander Best and, um.
Officer Vasquez.
Velasquez, okay, Officer Velasquez, for the job that you all are doing. And I also want to say, thank you for reaching out and getting the agreement where as those inmates could come and work on those properties. That's something that we've wanted for a long period of time. And I, my my overall message is this, communication is key. When you communicate with people, you have ideas, and they see how the city benefits, okay? I thank you because that's something that needed to be done, and thank both of you.
Thank you.
Even with purposes.
And I I do want to clarify, um, they are only cleaning properties that have been adjudicated. And this is all a legal process that we have worked with Commissioner Burrow Kane. We're very grateful to the Mississippi Department of Corrections now providing inmate labor to the city, not only for use during regular work hours, but as Commander Best said, also on weekends. And Commander Best, you really went above and beyond to make sure this was included in our inmate work program. Officer Velasquez, I just can't thank you for all the hours you're putting in.
Yes.
And all of these inmates who are putting in and gaining valuable experience that we hope will come to help them as they become reformed and eventually can be introduced back into the general society.
I just have one more question.
Yes, Alderman.
Commander Best, I noticed in the publication, there were many other properties. And there were properties on East Wood Lawn that were to be adjudicated tonight, but they were not in your second post.
Yes, ma'am, whatever was in the original list, that was the the mailouts for public hearings. And once those public hearing notices go out is when we generally get people's attention. And so whoever is not included in there is is in contact with us. And it it's either moved to a work in progress file or or it's been cleared, so.
I just didn't see them tonight in your work in progress because they were in the publication.
Thank you.
Okay.
And and also, just to be clear, any adjudicated property that the city claims, we then are keeping a record of those man-hours, the amount of taxpayer dollars that that represents. And we are attaching that to the taxes of those properties. And we'll be collecting them at the next payment of taxes. If they are not paid, we will also then go through the Municipal Intercept Company with the Mississippi Municipal League to have those items deducted from those individuals' income tax refunds. So gone are the days where people get their property cleaned for free.
No.
Uh, we may clean it, but then the adjudication process allows the city to collect on behalf of our taxpayers. And we're very grateful that that is now working.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you, Alderman Hall and everyone. We've made great progress in that area. Now, Nathan Stubbs with Stubbs NK Contractors LLC. I don't see Mr. Stubbs. This is a a road closure discussion. And it's not, this is not a project that's going to happen until the spring of 2026. So we will postpone this until he can be here.
Absolutely.
All right. We do have two officers that recently graduated from the Harrison County Police Academy. And it was a real pleasure to be there a week ago Friday with our police chief as they as they were were graduated. Chief Green, do we have the oaths that have to be administered? We do? All right, well, we're going to get that done right now. And I want them to please come forward, Officer Lyndell Minor Jr. and Officer Brandon O'Neill. And Officer Minor and Officer O'Neill are outstanding new officers, but also family men with children. It was so good to see you there at the graduation with your your children, literal toddlers and babies in arms. And we're just so grateful for your commitment to the city of Natchez. I'm going to ask you, and I'm going to invite any alderman who'd like to stand with me, to please come and and we'll take one at a time. Officer Minor, why don't you come on up? I'm going to ask Chief Green, if you would, stand here beside your new officer. And it's so good to see you, Chief Green, as we administer this up. And and Officer Officer Minor also has represented our community so well. And it was so good to see you at the graduation. And y'all had a really great class, as I understand. And I was there to see it for myself. We had both police officers and sheriff deputies being tied away at the same time. And the Harrison County Police Academy is very near to your heart.
It is.
Chief Green, you want to say, Sheriff White?
Harrison County Law Enforcement Academy is where I went to school, so, yes. As a matter of fact, honestly, I believe my entire command staff went to Harrison County, so.
That says a lot.
Yes.
Well, it was my honor to sit there with you, be there with our men and women in uniform. And so Officer Minor, if you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Officer Lyndell Minor Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully support.
That I will faithfully support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Mississippi.
And the Constitution of the State of Mississippi.
And obey the laws thereof.
And obey the laws thereof.
That I am not disqualified.
That I am not disqualified.
From holding the office.
From holding the office.
Of patroner.
Of patroner.
For the city of Natchez, Mississippi.
For the city of Natchez, Mississippi.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
Which I am about to enter.
Which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Officer Minor. If you would, just stand to the side, on the other side of your chief, and be here to support your fellow Officer O'Neill as he comes to take his. So good to see you, Officer. So good to see you. And Officer, I gotta tell you, you have some well-mannered children, and they're literal stumps. And they look like you. And that's a good thing. Oh, and they're a beautiful blend of you and your wife. Also, it's good to know that you have a father-in-law also on our force. Officer Detective Kelly. Uh, Kevin Wells. So glad to see that this day in the family. And glad to have you joining our force. Officer, if you would, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Brandon O'Neill.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully support.
That I will faithfully support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Mississippi.
And the Constitution of the State of Mississippi.
And obey the laws thereof.
And obey the laws thereof.
That I am not disqualified.
That I am not disqualified.
From holding the office.
From holding the office.
Of patroner.
Of patroner.
For the city of Natchez, Mississippi.
Natchez, Mississippi.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Which I am about to enter.
Which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, congratulations. And it is our tradition that when you do join our ranks, if you would come up, and we're going to have a word of prayer over here. If you'll just come in, right here, just right here in the center. And everyone gather around. I tell you, you got you got two former officers right here on the board who have your back. But we're going to this circle. These gentlemen, Father, we, you know, we have room in the circle. Father, we just lift up these gentlemen who have set out to be of service to us. And Father, we pray now that your hand of faith will be upon them, your hand of protection will be upon them, that your angels of mercy would be with them as they go in time. They know that when they go to work, their families will be kept safe, they will be kept safe. And as they return, they also will return safely and their families grateful to see them again come home. We thank you for the sacrifice they are making on our behalf. And we ask that you would give them your Godspeed. Go with them in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Officer.
Congratulations.
We'll get a quick.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I'll stand right there. Good to, good to have all of our officers here. We also have former officers, Mr. Ford, did see you. We appreciate all of you who serve and protect. You mean so much, including our firefighters, including all first responders. We'll tighten it up a little bit, let's come over this way.
I was waiting on Chief.
All right, come on down this way just a little, so we can get away from the podium. There we go.
Is everyone in? Is the former Officer Alderman Frazier in?
All right, right here, three, two, one.
Excellent.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you again, Chief. Thank you. And Chief, I understand you have more going through, sir?
I also, I also got a couple more things, God. I'm old, career, I'm not here.
And we also always thank Alderman Frazier and Alderman Davis for all of their years of service, not only to the city but to our country. Mr. Ford, we have so many veterans who serve, and we don't take it lightly. My father always taught me that freedom is not free, it comes at a price. Thank you for paying that price. At this time now, we will move to our department director reports. Mr. Johnson, you are recognized.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I provided a draft report to you the other day, I have added to it though. Replacement of Zone 1 and Zone 2 roofing system, Natchez Convention Center 2022, Convention Center Complex Bond. Bids for the above referenced activity were received until 10 o'clock AM on Thursday, September 18th, 2025. A summary of the bids received are listed below. You see, we received quite a few bids, and they do range in price. And you do see what is highlighted there as well. It is recommendation of staff and Wakecaster Dungen to accept the bid of Independent Roofing Systems Inc. base bid and alternate number two totaling $266,000, noting that the latter section of roofing protects the main exhibit hall space where conventions and visitors visit most frequently, in addition to further protecting an area just renovated with bond funds.
A motion made by Alderman Hall, seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion?
Yes, I.
Yes, Alderman Irving?
And and I don't, I I guess what I'm looking at, we didn't have anyone local. When I looked up all these contractors, all of them are out of our area.
That's correct.
This one that we have.
We don't have any local roofers, I mean, yes.
We don't have any, okay.
No, ma'am.
Any further discussion? Yes, Alderman Smith?
Just for the public, I'm assuming you felt like the best recommendation obviously was a little more expensive for taxpayers. Is there any particular reason or?
This is not the, this is the least expensive.
It's the least, it's the least.
Yes, it is.
The base bids.
I can answer that, Mr. Mayor.
You're looking at.
I'm just asking.
I know, no, no, ma'am, I mean, the the one selected is the lowest.
What total, you mean, with?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
When you add the alternate.
That is correct, yes.
I understand, okay.
Yes, oh no, this is, this was the low.
Okay. Okay, yes, Alder Alderwoman Hall?
I did speak with Mr. Wakecaster as to why this particular one was chosen, same reason you were asking. And he said. And he said because it, as Mr. Johnson stated, that their roof, that their construction on the roof will cover the exhibit hall and all public areas.
Yes.
Whereas the other one would not.
Yes. And we did omit, as you see, add also number one, which is basically over the mechanical area, kitchen area. And we haven't put any new monies in there. We thought it was prudent to try and protect what we've just invested in.
So they felt this was the best investment.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm, I'm very grateful for work independent roofing has done. We came in under budget when they did the work at City Hall, allowing us to continue with other renovations of City Hall. They have been doing the work at the auditorium.
Correct.
We know they will do a good job.
Yes.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Alderwoman Frazier?
From Jackson.
They're in Jackson, yes, sir.
Okay. We, the question has been called. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item, Mr. Johnson.
Applying textured finish to the exterior of the Duncan Park Golf Clubhouse, 2022 Capital Improvement Bond and Rec. Bond. Quote bids for the above reference activity were received until 11 o'clock a.m. on Thursday, September 18th. A summary of the quote bid received are listed below. We did receive four quote bids. The lowest bidder is Braswell Construction Company with a bid of $28,752. It is within funds. Pleasure to the board.
Was a pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Maroney, seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderwoman Hall?
Mr. Johnson, do you have a?
I do, yes, ma'am. For your records.
Put upon the minutes. When permission from the Department of Archives and History, that's my question.
Yes. Thank you, Alderwoman Hall. Do we have further discussion? I'll call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The, the ayes have it, motion, we are voting on Braswell.
Oh, thank you.
Construction, correct.
Yes, sir.
They are the low bid, but also 30 days, which is a very good length of time.
It may take longer than that, noting this is a landmark property and a markup is required.
Okay. I can't wait to cut the ribbon on this property when it's finished. Thank you. We'll now move to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item, Mr. Johnson.
Duncan Park Golf Clubhouse Phase Two monies from the Land and Water Conference Fund, funded by the Mississippi Department of Wildlife, Fish and Parks. Staff is requesting a motion to approve the professional services agreement with Belinda Stewart Architects totaling $37,000 due to provide design phase bidding, construction, administration, et cetera, for this renovation project that is partially funded by the Mississippi Department of Wildlife, Fish and Parks.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderwoman Hall.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
This isn't our budget for Phase Two.
Yes, ma'am. The city did budget $20,000 in FY26 plus with the local grant.
Thank you. Well, Alderman Frazier?
You stated it was already in our budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. We will call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item?
This, I think, is a new item. New beginnings Vine Street and Old Washington Road Emergency Watershed Project, Natural Resource Conservation Service. Staff, Mr. Dollar, myself, and counsel with consulting engineer Jordan Castle Sessions, is requesting a motion to approve deductive change order number four totaling $2,395 and reduce the contract value from 464, $467,416.75 to $465,021.75. The reason for deductive change order number four is a reduction in final quantities needed to complete the job.
Was a pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Maroney, seconded by Alderwoman Irving. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderwoman Hall?
When was the completion of Vine Street?
When was it completed? July 25th.
I thought it was, so you asked, so they can't complete it?
Waiting for paperwork.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries.
I have one more item that I added this afternoon. Approval and concurrence of Neil Schaefer Preliminary Engineering Contract, FY24 Raize Grant Forks to Freedom Corridor, funded by the Federal Highway Administration and MDOT.
So moved.
Haven't said it yet.
Well, thank you, Alderwoman Irving.
It's in my court.
Staff is requesting a motion to approve the preliminary engineering contract with Neil Schaefer, Inc., and to allow the mayor to sign that contract subject to the concurrence of the Mississippi Department of Transportation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderwoman Irving, seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion? We'll call for the question.
All excited about it.
Excited to.
Yes.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item?
And this is for the Natchez Public Works Department, Mario Street Emergency Watershed Project, Natural Resource Conservation Service. Staff, Mr. Dollar, myself, is requesting a motion to approve a professional services contract with Wakecaster Dungen to provide the required engineering services for this erosion control project. Total value of engineering contract is $23,500.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderwoman Irving, seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion? We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you so much, Mr. Johnson. We now will recognize our fire chief, Albert Arrington. Chief Arrington, good to see you this evening.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I put on your desk our proposal for our CAD integration. This CAD integration will allow the fire department to receive information from our dispatch center to help with our report writing. Right now, we have to call the dispatch center after a call, get all of the necessary information to input into the CAD system. It's just kind of a cumbersome process. This will streamline that process, get the information in automatically, and it'll just be imported with our report writing system.
So moved.
Second.
Great thing. Alderman Davis has made the motion. Alderwoman Irving has seconded that motion. Discussion? This is really a great step forward. The police department and fire department both moving forward with great technological advances that are going to streamline the process and make all things better.
This, so one of the processes that we do every month is dispatch gives us a printout of all of the calls because they have to handwrite the information. And then we have to reconcile that with what's in our records. We won't have to do that anymore. When we get this system in place, everything will be imported and we can just reconcile it in-house without all of the paperwork.
Great.
It'll be really good for us.
Any further discussion?
I know.
We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Harrington. Ms. Carla Monroe, we are now happy to see you this evening, and you are recognized.
Good evening, board. I'm here to request approval to purchase 136 chairs from Amazon for the Natchez Senior Center. So I wanted.
Asking for approval?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have the information on that purchase?
I have some pictures of the chairs. Well, someone's sitting in the chair that I brought with me. I do apologize.
I don't know that we can approve it without seeing the actual breakdown of money and having our city clerk.
This should be in her budget.
Well, but to make sure, but we need to make sure what the total cost is. And if there are, because two quotes are quite often required.
So we did some comparisons and did look at multiple different chairs and, you know, picked some that were adequate for what she needed. We also looked at the option of taking some older chairs that are already at the senior center and having them refurbished and recovered. And I do not have the breakdown. What we're paying. Did you bring the breakdown of the cost of the chairs?
Well, I did go through, I talked to Herman Upholstery, and they were willing to do one chair for 125, where these are $72, I want to say, a chair. So the cost to get the cushion and replace and the chair recovered was going to be a bit more. Even though the iron is good on the chairs, the problem is the nails are coming through and the cushion is disintegrating within the chair. So they have to be replaced.
I see. Madam Clerk, does this meet the requirements that we need to meet?
Yes. And I mean, we looked at a number of different chairs and got quotes ranging anywhere from, these, like she said, were like $72, maybe $72.99 a chair or something, ranging all the way up to over $300 per chair. So these are well within her budget and reasonable pricing.
I know that we are, I just have to ask the questions. I know we are purchasing on Amazon. Did we look at local vendors and providers?
They were significantly more.
Yes.
Okay. I would like that spread on the minutes.
Sure.
We obviously have to make sure everyone understands we are trying to meet a budget. We have to stay within that budget. And it does require sometimes to have to go outside and purchase. And I hate that, but it is important that we see to the safety, comfort and safety of our individuals at the senior center while also staying within our budget.
Yes, sir. And these chairs can, they can hold a maximum of 400 pounds. So I did consider the weight when I was.
So these are good, solid chairs?
Yes, they should be very durable.
Was a pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderwoman Irving, seconded by Alderwoman Hall. Discussion? We'll call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I did want to make another request. I know it's not on the agenda. There is a conference this Friday that, well, this Thursday with the transportation, the summit that was canceled due to the water main broke while we were there. So they're going to extend the conference on this Thursday. And I would like to attend that, go that morning, come back that evening.
Yes.
Also.
And, and, and where is the conference?
It's going to be in Jackson. Everything is going to be continuing in Jackson. I did bring the information with me, but it's going to be, let me see, at the Sparkman Auditorium off of Lakeland Drive this Thursday.
So moved.
Second.
All right, a motion has been made by Alderwoman Hall, seconded by Alderwoman Irving. Alderwoman Smith?
What conference is it?
It's the transportation summit that we do, ma'am.
I was just curious, transportation with senior citizens?
Well, yes, we, we are a part of the, of the MDOT. We contract out for the 5310 program. And so we go give feedback and updates. And yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Give them that information.
Thank you very much. Further discussion? The question's been called. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Monroe.
There's one other conference that I would like to request.
Yes.
To attend is the 2025 NADSA National Conference. This is the adult day conference that they do every year for all the groups to go to. This year, the conference will be held at Palmer House Hilton. Well, no, wait a minute. The conference will be held in Chicago, Illinois, on October the 22nd through the 24th.
Ms. Monroe, I'm sorry, we'll need documentation and information on that conference before we can approve it.
Okay.
And we are actually discussing some amendments to our conference and travel policy tonight. Not saying that we don't want you to go, but we just need documentation of that. Yes, it is, but we don't have any documentation on that, do we?
I do apologize. It came in to me on Monday, around Monday. So I just brought it with me.
We need all of that to go through the process in order.
Okay.
Hopefully, we'll be able to get that approved at our next meeting, but we just need to have the documentation.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, Alderwoman?
Since we're talking about that, I thought, and I do understand what you're saying. We have not received any of the information. I know you want.
We have to get the information.
I understand that, but as far as funding, that's in their budget.
Right.
That's in their budget.
But we can't really.
I understand. I say tonight, I do understand that. We don't have, okay.
Okay. Yes, Alderwoman Smith?
Just request where, since we're beginning about to begin our mid fiscal year, what everybody wants to do for the year, so we can look at it. Because, I mean, sometimes there's regional conferences instead of national. And sometimes we just want to get the most we can for the money.
Right.
Is that, can we, I'll make a motion that we request.
We, we will have a discussion of a travel policy in a few moments. If you want to say that, for that, that could become a part of that proposed travel.
It, ma'am, ma'am.
It doesn't say no, I'm just.
No, 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 I'm just saying, though, but I think we need to look at. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I'm thinking is that we need to look at, we don't, their funding is there. We do not, we're just a pass through for them with their budget. So when it comes to, and I do agree that she needs to provide the proper documentation So when it comes to, and I do agree that she needs to provide the proper documentation so that the city could be aware of, but as far as that being a part of our city budget, that's not included.
Okay. Well, we will, we'll have that discussion a little later, uh, following our agenda. Certainly.
Federal funding is taxpayer money as well. Just, why?
Yes.
But again, it's passed through to us.
We will, we will discuss, uh, a little more. Um, Madam Clerk, I'm looking in my packet. Do we have that?
I, I took it down to your office.
Policy, cause I don't see it in my packet.
I can.
I know we're not, but I'm just looking ahead if there was a way to get it before we get to that section, cause I don't see it in the packet. We may not be able to discuss that.
I can run across the street.
I don't see it.
Like, but I did take it down to your office.
Well, I tell you what we're going to do. Uh, we're going to make sure that gets, uh, distributed to everyone.
Okay.
And we'll discuss that travel policy at our next meeting because everyone needs to have time to look at it. It is a travel policy that the city clerk prepared. I think it's a great, uh, starting document and we'll go from there. Uh, but since it was not in your package for tonight, we won't actually discuss it tonight. Uh, but we certainly are open to any suggestions such as the one that you just provided, Alderman Smith. Um, at the end of the day, we want to make sure everyone's doing what they need to for their jobs, uh, but also that we are staying within our budget. Okay? So I won't even be discussing that during my report. Uh, we'll be postponing that until the next meeting and we'll get that documentation to you. Sorry about that. Uh, thank you, Ms. Monroe. We now will recognize Alderman Hall for her report.
Uh, yes, sir. I would, I'd like to, um, make a motion that the following raises the approved effective October one, twenty-twenty-five.
Sir?
Employees.
No. We hadn't had this.
We have had this.
We didn't approve it.
We are, I'm making a motion. We approve it now. We, we discussed this. I'm gonna want to give employee numbers.
Okay. Continue with your motion, Alderman Hall. You have the floor.
Employee number three zero two eight six one, new salary forty thousand. Employee number three zero three two one six, new salary fifty thousand eleven twenty. Employee number three zero three zero zero zero, new salary thirty-six thousand. Employee number three zero two nine four one, new salary forty-two thousand. Employee number three zero two zero eight nine, new salary fourteen thousand five hundred. Employee number three zero one seven two six, new salary forty thousand. Employee number three zero two five nine six, new salary sixty-five thousand. Employee number three zero three two three one, new salary forty-two thousand. Employee number three zero three one six nine, new salary sixty-five thousand. Employee number three zero three two two one, new salary thirty-six thousand.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Do we have a second to the motion? Seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion?
I just thought.
Discussion, Alderman Irving.
I mean, we've had the discussion, but nothing was final. And I was just saying, we would have to do an amendment. That's the last conversation, um, that this is in the budget.
Uh, I'll have to ask a question of the clerk.
Because that, that's my thought on it. That's the reason why I was saying that, so.
Uh, yes, Madam Clerk, if you could answer the question.
So these were the employees that were discussed and were included in the budget that was recently adopted. So these, these raises are accommodated within the approved budget.
Okay.
Um, Alderman Smith.
I just think it's probably, um, Alderman Irving, it's just unusual for an alderman. Typically, the city clerk.
Yes, that's what we do. Right.
It means asking me to get it in. I'm just saying that's typically.
That is, and that's her, her duty actually as a city clerk.
Well, I did ask the city clerk to do that and she did ask me to do it in my report.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. Thank you. Further discussion? I will state for the record that, uh, uh, you, you may have noticed, this is a very few. Uh, and these are generally those that felt like in past years, they may have been overlooked. Uh, and we appreciate all of our employees and we appreciate all that they do. I'm very grateful that we have been able to give so many increases to our public works, to our police, to our fire, uh, and others. Um, um, wish we could give everyone a raise this year. Uh, but obviously, uh, we're having to keep to a tight budget as we've already been discussing. I will call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Continue your report, Matt.
Um, that is my report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Fraser, you're now recognized.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a statement that I would like to read. Mr. Mayor, fellow colleagues and community members, many of my constituents, community, in this community, members have shared concerns about the recent statement on local news outlets that may have been misled or misrepresented. To be clear, the Board of Alders never voted to host, sponsor, or improve a prayer service or celebration of life for the late Charlie Kirk. While his passing was a tragic event, and I extend my deepest condolences to his family and loved one, we must also acknowledge that Mr. Kirk was often at the center of words of action that caused division in community lack hours. As a leader of a small but resilient city, often described as a renewal city on the move, we must make sure our decisions reflect unity and inclusiveness. Supporting public events of this nature could intentionally cause, cause pain to members of our disability community, women, peoples of color, LGBTQ communities, and others who were hurt by past words and actions. I was also informed that our neighboring city, Badega, declined to host this event. I believe we should follow their example to avoid creating more division in our community. I respectfully ask that our leaders provide clarity to the public on this matter. For the record, I did not and would not support such a resolution. While it is right for an individual to get, read privately in their own way, as a community, we must remain mindful and compassionate. We need to stay true to our vision to build a strong and more inclusive nation, while also remembering the importance of standing together as one community. I would just like to say, I just read that, that is my, uh, uh, is my statement. Uh, it, it reflects my views and some of my constituents who have been calling me, uh, as, as the statement goes on to say, is, uh, we should, we should, uh, really had more input into this. But as you say, any, anything dealing with violence is unacceptable. And as, as I stated earlier, it's tragedy that we as a nation got to go down this road and, and when we should be together as one nation, but dividing the community and dividing this nation is something that we must all live with now and is unfortunate. That's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Fraser. I do want to make a statement. Um, the city did not host a prayer vigil. The city is from time to time asked by local groups and churches, uh, that they be allowed to use public property. And, uh, I will tell you right now, as long as I'm your mayor, any church that wants to have a prayer vigil in this city on the bluff, we're not gonna tell them no. If we tell one, then where do we stop? We have a freedom of speech in this country. We have a freedom of religion and we also have a freedom of peaceful assembly. And I am not going to deny that to any group. We actually, if you will recall, worked very closely with another group just a few years ago on Juneteenth, on Father's Day, that wanted to have an armed walk through our city. We worked with all law enforcement agencies to make sure that their ability to assemble, to their ability to protest, their ability to, uh, have a parade on our, uh, Main Street on Father's Day was honored and that their constitutional rights were respected. I will not pick and choose those that can and cannot use our public facilities. I have not done that as mayor and I never will do that. I will say this. If anyone wants to question my motives as your mayor, go back and look at my record. I have been from day one about One Natchez, about standing up for unity, peace, love for God, love for one another. And I will continue to do this in spite of despicable things that are shared about me on Facebook, on social media. I have been a target of hate, of lies ever since before I ran for office. If you will recall, I had barely begun my campaign in the year twenty-twenty when a rumor was started that I had been a member of the KKK. Do you realize that that rumor was perpetuated again as recently as last week? Along with a fake photograph of me in a Klan outfit. This is despicable behavior and that is behavior that is intentionally there to divide our community and to get our eyes off of what's really important. And that is working together as One Natchez to move this community further. But I want to state for the record again, this was not a city-sponsored event. This was simply what we do when we are requested by public groups to use public facilities and properties to promote their own constitutional rights, to assemble, freedom of religion, and so on. And we will continue to be a city that is a city here for all. We obviously all can't agree, but in the words of President Barack Obama, we can disagree without being disagreeable. I certainly have learned some things over the last few weeks that I don't agree with, but I refuse to engage in hate. I also refuse to engage in spreading of lies and intimidation, fake news, and fake photographs. That is despicable. I know that as a public servant, I am not allowed to do anything about it. If I was a private individual, I could certainly sue for libel and for slander. And it's a shame that there are those in my family who have to see this. However, I will end by making this statement. My wife happened to see a picture shared with her last week of me in a Confederate uniform. And her comment to me was, she always liked a man in uniform.
Mr. Mayor, let me, let me.
We have to.
Mr. Mayor.
And that's a joke. But that's, the reason I say that is it was very hurtful to me. And she said, well, I just have to say, those are the acts of various people who are trying their best to get our focus off what's really important. But I do say again, we didn't host anything.
Mr. Mayor.
We just made sure people had the right to assemble. We'll continue to do that.
As you say, Mr. Mayor, uh, those are very hurtful words, as you say. It, uh, that was very hurtful to the black community. When you hosted something on the, on the bluff, as you say, you're the mayor. I, I, I grant you that. But like you say, we as black Americans have suffered so much.
Yeah.
And now, uh, uh, you, uh, I don't know anywhere else in the state of Mississippi that they had a prayer, a vigil. But as I say, if Badega refused to, to host it, then why you had to, had to host it over here?
I didn't host anything.
Where they came.
I didn't host, I didn't host the militant group from Texas that marched on our city several years ago. But I made sure that their constitutional rights were served.
Talking about militant groups, we can get into talking about militant groups.
So Alderman Fraser.
You know, with Miss Mayor.
I'd like to know this, and I just asked you this question. Um, which churches then would you like for us to allow to use our public facilities? And which churches would you like for us to disallow? If you will give me that list, I can submit it to our attorney and see if that can be considered.
Don't try and reflect that back on me like that.
I'm sorry, but that's what it is.
No, 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 no.
I think.
No, 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 no.
No, no. The city did not post this.
We didn't host it.
That's all he was trying to say.
Don't reflect that back on me. You can't do that.
We didn't host it.
You can't do that.
I was in Minneapolis, Minnesota, representing our city at Mississippi River Cities Council. And I, and I'm sorry, but I will tell you, it hurts. It hurts to be called a racist when I've lived all my life to make a difference. And you know, even though the devil may try to use this as a means of getting me off my purpose, I will tell you, I will always stand true to my purpose. I have been called to be mayor of the city at a time when in this country, there is great unrest and a great divide. But I will continue to be mayor of One Natchez, representing all people, going all places equally, and being the best mayor I can be.
And I will continue to be an Alderman Fraser ward too, speaking out for my constituents.
And I enjoy working with you, Alderman Fraser, and I thank you.
We can have these conversations. Good to have.
Like, like I just said, we can disagree without being.
Yes, we can do that. We can do that, but we shouldn't have conversations about it.
Yes. But I will say this, the next church that asks for a prayer vigil, they give a yes from me. I have no choice. That's the Constitution. That's the Constitution.
Well, it looks like the country ain't limited by the Constitution.
All right. Alderman Fraser, that concludes your remarks.
You can go on with your, Mr. Mayor.
Alderwoman Smith, you are now recognized. Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderwoman Irving?
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to start with my letter from the NAACP. Um, and I just wanted to ask our city clerk a question. Had you received the letter, um, our city clerk?
I did. It was actually emailed to me and I printed it out and put it in everyone's boxes.
And we have asked for an invoice so the city can purchase the table as we normally do.
Well, thank you.
And I met with our committee liaison. There's a very important banquet being held on Friday, October third by the NAACP. The city will have a table at that banquet. We have ten seats.
This is what I'm asking.
And we are excited to invite everyone.
Well, thank you.
Back to you, Alderman.
Okay, well, thank you. And that's in reference to, so we will purchase that. Well, thank you. And I want to thank you as being a member of NAACP. Thank you, Mayor and board. I'm hoping, I'm hoping that all of you all will be able to attend the event. I'm hoping that all of you all will be able to attend the event. It will take place, um, October third at seven P M. The location is at the event, which is on, um, Gayosa Street here in Natchez. So I'm hoping that you all have gotten that information. If I need to repeat it, please, uh, I will do so if necessary. Again, the location of the NAACP, um, banquet. Okay?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, I also want to, um, request that when we close our meeting this evening, that we do it in honor of Miss Virginia Rose Miles, um, someone in our community who spent a great deal of, um, dealing with our youth in our community. She was a, um, a transportation provider through the bus system here in Natchez for our youth and in honor of Judge Marr, if we had not. Mm-hmm, Judge Marr. Um, also, um, I want to announce that there will be a food, a mobile food dry pantry giveaway. The, at Macedonia Baptist Church. The location is thirty-three Monastery, um, on Friday, September twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five. The time is to be announced. They have not called with the EBA delivery time. So once they're done, I will update my Facebook page. Um, I'm asking that members of the community, please line up from Brenham Avenue up to Monastery. Um, and we will have the police there to, God, I've already called it in. So thank you for all that you all do with that as well. Um, also, Mr. Mayor, I want to share with our board because this was news for me as well. And I, I came up on Monday, um, requesting an application for a constituent who is disabled, can't get up the stairs in City Hall. And, um, I went to get the application for our SNAP program. And, um, I found out some disheartening information that it's no longer existing. It's been dismantled. Um, and I was just gonna ask, you know, something of that magnitude should have been shared with the board because we do have what's called a, a, a running list. And it's been explained to me now that I've asked a question because here I got constituents calling. They know October first is basically when they began taking the applications. And they're no longer, um, taking the applications because the program has ended. That's something I think the public needs to know. So if we could.
If I could, we did share that, um, when the banks, um, stopped funding it, that's why we saw the Mississippi Home Corporation grant to take its place. Um, but, uh, but I would love to see the SNAP program restored if the banks would begin funding it again.
Okay.
They cut funding.
They did. He explained, he did explain that.
And that was a shame, yes.
In fact, Mr. Johnston shared that a few years ago.
No, it was just last year we did SNAP projects, but all I'm saying is that now that it's no longer in effect. And so, but what he did say, and I did talk with Ms. West today, um, I did, was able to put that, um, constituent's name on a waiting list. I know we're having to apply for funding again.
Yes.
And so hopefully it'll be a turnaround within the next year or two because I know that has to continue to work in effect this way with what the home courts, um, um, grant that we received. So, um, I've added the name to the list and I know that there is a list there as well. So I'm hoping that we can continue to help our constituents. The SNAP grant program was a grant that helped a lot of individuals. Actually, Mr. Johnston shared over two hundred people had received, um, assistance through that grant. And so it's for a worthy cause.
Very much so.
So we can help to improve the quality of life for our citizens that are living on a fixed income.
Yes.
Okay.
Very much so.
And that ends my report.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Next report, Alderman Davis.
I only have one thing. Uh, I'm not asking the city for money, I'm asking the board member for money. I'm sponsoring this little girl, uh, Little Miss Colleen. Uh, you gotta cash out things up there. I'm gonna give her money though. I'm just asking the board, uh,
Sure.
Five dollars or whatever.
So what is Miss, is Ma?
Little Miss Colleen.
Little Miss Colleen. Is that Malia, Malaya? Malia Irving?
Yeah, they, they're gonna be going to, uh, they're doing, uh, competitions and then see who gets elected. And then they have to be going to Western, you know, they'll have to travel and go, you know.
Okay.
And then try to help them out.
Okay, so actually, do you mind reading that? Uh, you want to read it?
You can read it.
So here it says that, um, greetings, please, let me put my other set of eyes on. Please show your support and purchase a day of the month to support me as I campaign to become Little Miss Colleen twenty-five, twenty-six, sponsored by our. to become Little Miss Colleen 2526, sponsored by our Alderman, um, Ben Davis. And so that is, if you, for instance, if you, today's the 23rd, if you purchase the 23rd, then that's $23 that you would donate to the Cash App, and each day of the month, so we're willing to do that. What you can, but that's what it's asking, and of course you're not turning anything down. So I think that's a great idea. I will do that, I will participate with that.
Board, be, be nice now.
Her Cash App is there too, so.
All right, all right.
You got a picture? Okay.
Oh, I'm already getting contributions.
That is my report.
Um, thank you, Alderman Davis. Alderman Maroney?
Thank you, thank you.
No report.
Okay, thank you. We will now then go to our city clerk.
Okay, um, I have two items. The first is a request for approval of the second, September 2025 Claim Stockit.
It's a pleasure of the board. A motion has been made by Alderwoman Hall, seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion?
Yes, I do.
Yes, Alderwoman Irving?
Okay, let me see, do I have it? There was just a second. Because I did, let's look at, um, page 74. Page 74.
Do you have your claim stock with you?
I have it. I hit mine, and I remember that date. Because we have two things here.
I don't have a page 74.
Well, can I see your claim stock in a minute, please? Thank you, and I can share with you. It was in reference to, um... I apologize, I thought I had mine. It was S, an S. I don't see it right off, Mayor. It's no need of me doing this like this. I did have it highlighted.
Alderwoman, if you have that question later, feel free to reach out to our city clerk and...
I did, because, um, okay, I will.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or discussion?
All questions.
The question's been called, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item, Madam.
Our next and final item is a request for approval of the second, September 2025 Mini Claim Stockit.
It was a pleasure, Lord. Motion made by Alderwoman, Alderwoman Smith, and seconded by Alderwoman Hall. The question's been called, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question I just wanted to ask.
Yes, Alderwoman Irving.
The cost payable, this is just for information?
Yes, um, so Pam usually prepares that, and she was out, Tiffany prepared it in her absence, and I think gave you all everything in the file, all the backup that we don't typically, you know, make copies of, but yes, that's, that's all it is. That's all the backup documentation.
All right.
All right, thank you. Uh, thank you, Madam Plutter. Mr. Attorney, I believe you have, uh, an item here.
Mr. Mayor, that was a mistake on my part.
Okay.
Those were the two resolutions.
Those are what we did last night.
We approved last night.
All right.
And by mistake, I put them on the 23rd instead of the 22nd.
Okay.
No reason.
Great, great. Um, well, we had, we will be discussing the proposed travel policy. Alderwoman Smith, uh, you've made a good, uh, recommendation that we might can incorporate into that policy. I'm going to invite others as you get a copy of the proposed policy. If you have recommendations, please share them as well. We'll get that to you, and we'll have more discussion about that next week. I want to also give a shout out, uh, for the Employee Roundtable Discussion that will be held tomorrow. Uh, this is a part of our Workforce Development Program, and these topics, marketing, partnerships, pre-apprenticeships, compensation and rewards, these are issues that are very helpful to employers in our area. And so this will be a time to have discussion, share some great ideas. It's a good thing for our employers. I also want to give a, a brief report about the, uh, the travels last week. Had a very good meeting last week in Minneapolis, Minnesota, Twin Cities, with the members of the Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative. Uh, all total, there were about 30 mayors there in attendance, and the topic of conversation was Natchez 2026. We will be hosting this conference here in Natchez, and I can tell you that everyone was very excited. We also had some great discussions with regard to the Mississippi River Waterway, and a motion was passed to increase the, the reach of our group to include not only mayors along the Mississippi River, but also along as tributaries, such as the Ohio River and the Arkansas River. And so we're really excited about the future of the organization as it grows in influence, understanding that this region is so important to our country, and is so important to cities like Natchez that depend on the river for much of our economy. Uh, the Viking Cruise Company was in attendance along with American Cruise Lines, and it was also exciting while there to have conversation with American Cruise Lines and get the first glimpse of their design that they're proposing for the new dock that will be built here in Natchez, a $4 million dock. We will soon see the design at its final form for submission to the local Preservation Commission, also the Mississippi Department of Archives and History, and they are also working with the Army Corps of Engineers and the Mississippi Coast Guard. I'm sorry, the Mississippi River, the Coast Guard that oversees Mississippi River. We, we have a great development on the way for Under the Hill, so that's all very exciting. Also, a very good meeting of the, uh, Mississippi Municipal League in Tupelo. It was a very fast week going to Minnesota, coming back to Tupelo, and, uh, meeting with mayors and aldermen and other city officials from all over the state. The Board of Directors for the Mississippi Municipal League does many things in addition to setting policy for the municipal league, but also establishing, uh, our legislative agenda going forward. We will be discussing more about this at the Small Town Conference. We had, I think, one of the most productive meetings I've ever, uh, attended. It was also very good to, uh, be able to sit with the, uh, uh, so many, uh, new mayors, uh, that are off to a great start, and we are going to be having a number of these individuals in Natchez this Thursday. So we are expecting about 70 people to come to our meeting of the Southwest Mayors Association. I'm very blessed to be the president now of that association, and this is an informative meeting. All of you are invited. The meeting will start at, uh, nine o'clock with breakfast at the Civic Center. The first session begins at 9:30, and we go until 2:30. We will have Todd Bubler there presenting very important information about keeping your, uh, employee handbooks up to date. We'll also have Bill Cork there talking about economic development for small towns. We'll have Ward Peterson there with the Southwest Mississippi Plain Development District talking about all of the great services that they provide. We also will have, uh, a very important discussion on violent crime, and we have the Chairman of Committees in the House and the Senate, municipalities committees, judiciary committees, to be a part of that discussion. We have also invited all area legislators for our Southwest region to be there for a legislative forum as well. So we look forward to a good program. It is free to municipal officials and partners, and, uh, we are serving a really good lunch. Ms. Yolanda Morgan, uh, Alderman Frazier, I think you know Ms. Morgan, she catered your event just last month. When, when Ms. Morgan is the caterer, you know you're going to eat good.
Absolutely.
So we're looking forward to that. Uh, also, very important.
Before you go on, are the law enforcement, are law enforcement invited to the discussion?
Yes, yes, and they are. In fact, uh, uh, we've been working with law enforcement, uh, not only here but other agencies. We've invited our police chief to be in attendance, our sheriff will also be in attendance, and so it's going to be a good meeting. We also, I want to just say, we are, uh, starting pilgrimage this week, and we need a strong fall. We need everything from pilgrimage to the balloon festival, to Angels on the Bluff, to be a great success, and all those in between. Our economy has had, well, some challenging times this summer across the nation, and it has affected us here in Natchez. And so we need to really get behind all of the events this season. Uh, you know, tourism is our number one industry, and we see a lot of individuals and businesses, it's their make or break time this fall, and so let's get behind all of these events because, uh, our people need these jobs, and we need to make sure that our restaurants, we, uh, that our, uh, tour partners and travel companies, and also, uh, all these great shops are, are able to stay open. Uh, for the very first time in the history of Natchez, the Dr. John Bowman Banks House will be on the pilgrimage, sharing all of the great history of Dr. Banks, who was the first man of color to be a doctor in the state of Mississippi, let alone Natchez. A lot of great history there. Uh, all of the information is online, and so be sure to, uh, check that out, and let's have a great fall season. Also, next Tuesday, let's pray for more fall weather, because our plan is that we will be on the front lawn of City Hall for our annual State of the City address.
What time?
And if it's hot, we're actually moving to the city auditorium.
I won't be there, man.
I know, Alderman Davis, you're on your way to represent us at a conference out, out of town, but we appreciate that. But we are going to have a great evening as we celebrate accomplishments, but also talk about challenges and how we are overcoming those challenges. I will tell you, one of the greatest challenges we have in this country right now is division, and those are things that we deal with all the time. Here lately, there are those in our midst who are using everything they can to stoke division. Well, we're going to be all about unity, because that's what we are in Natchez. We've been through so much in our over 300 years.
400 years.
Well, over 300. We've had our tricentennial, we are now approaching our 300th. Goodness, next year will be our 310th birthday, ever since 1716. And so we have overcome so much, we're not going to stop now. And the reason I think there are those who like to build division is because it's a great distraction from progress, and we have so much progress happening in Natchez, historic progress, such as the Trace Town Shopping Center, such as what's happening and will soon happen north of Walmart, happening with the Olaf, but also a lot of other things that are happening. I will end on this. A great thing that is coming to Natchez the last weekend of January is the Mississippi Songwriters Festival. The Mississippi Songwriters Festival was founded in 2010, and it has, over the years, been going from Ocean Springs to Oxford, to Meridian, uh, to Cleveland. A lot of, uh, state musicians have gotten involved in this, and they have a very strong national connection. Well, if you'll recall, Marla, my wife and I were able to attend this event in Ocean Springs last year when they honored Natchezian Glenn Ballard. It was then that we started sharing with them our desire to see them bring this event to Natchez. They started looking in the calendar, and they said, well, we have a Gulf Coast region, we have a Delta region, we have these other regions, we don't have a Capitol River region. So they started looking at cities in this Capitol River region, and they chose Natchez. From now on, beginning the last weekend of January, from now on, we will host the January edition of the Mississippi Songwriters Festival. This brings a lot of people to Natchez during a time that we're traditionally slow, and I hope it will be a real boon to our economy. Local Natchez, Natchez resident and Nashville songwriter Tommy Pold has worked with the Mississippi Songwriters Festival to bring five great names here for our songwriter festival. These are talents behind a lot of great hits. Uh, the guy who wrote, uh, his name is Roger Cook, "I'd Like to Teach the World to Sing in Perfect Harmony." He's going to be here. We're also going to have the songwriter who, uh, wrote, and his name is Jim Moose Brown, and you may have heard the song, "It's Five O'Clock Somewhere." He's going to be here. A number of other artists. Um, all local venues are going to be having, uh, that Friday night, uh, live music and songwriters throughout the city of Natchez, and we will have songwriter workshops, open mic, and a finale with all of these Nashville legends at our Civic Center that Saturday and Saturday evening. So mark your calendars for January 30th and 31st for the first ever Mississippi Songwriters Festival in Natchez. And we had a great time with them on the coast this weekend promoting the festival, and the buzz was all about Natchez. But you know, there's only one Natchez. So grateful to be here. I'm now going to entertain a motion to adjourn, and in so doing, I'd like for us to remember the request of Alderwoman Irving, and I'd like to ask her to make the motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn the meeting in honor of Ms. Virginia Rose Miles and Judge Maher, Ellen Maher.
Thank you. Motion made by Alderwoman Irving, seconded by Alderman Davis. We will call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Let us now have a moment of silence for these two wonderful ladies that have been mentioned this evening and their contribution to our community. Thank you, Lord. We lift these families up to you in prayer, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Everyone have a good evening.
The rest of the board, don't forget, I helped me out in there.